What is Gexius?
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 8th, 2025, meeting of the Martinsville Common Council. Meeting is hereby called to order. This time, I would like to invite Pastor Nathan Jansen from Prince P. Lutheran Church. Come forward, open us with prayer, and if you remain standing for our pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, Ruler of all, we graciously regard, we ask of you graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority here in Martinsville, that they may be guided by your Holy Spirit, that they may be wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, unwavering in duty, and that under them, we may be governed quietly and peaceably. Bless and me with this community. We come before you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Mr. Merida, would you please call roll?
John Badger?
Present.
Susie Lips?
Present.
Ben Mayhan?
Present.
Josh Farren?
Present.
Ann Miller?
Present.
Phil Dickert Senior?
Hospitalized.
Phil Dickert the Second?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you were sent minutes of the Monday, November 24th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Second.
The motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Just a quick comment. Due to the holiday activities of the week of Christmas, we're going to move the December 22nd meeting to Monday, December 29th. We'll move it back a week. And it will be a very bare-bones, we'll have claims and minutes to prove, and we're trying to push anything else off until the first of the year. So we just want to make you aware of that. Also, in your packets, tonight, you received the meeting dates for 2026, including, and that is the 2027 budget workshop. So if you would please get those on your calendars. Under unfinished business tonight, we have ordinance 2025-1900, setting salaries of certain appointed officials and employees. At the November 24th meeting, this ordinance was tabled. So at this time, Mr. Coffey, do you have any comments on this?
I do not. This is the, this is the ordinance we have originally introduced, I think, maybe two meetings ago now, and I know you discussed it last meeting. So we've not made any modifications to this at this time.
I make a motion that we approve the setting of salaries of certain appointed officials and employees. Ordinance 1900.
I'll second.
An motion made and seconded to approve the setting of salaries in certain appointed officials and employees.
Or discussion?
Any discussion?
Just so the council knows, again, so it doesn't delay, it'll go as is. If there's a question about that, dollar 26 for certain, for our clerks, not just at the courts through the city. We'll amend that later. That'll come in after this date, but this way, our salary ordinance goes through, and then there'll probably be at least one payroll in the time we get an amendment, and then that'll just, they'll make that retroactive, so people won't lose out any money. They'll get that money, any payroll, those through. I just want to make sure the council is clear of that, understood? Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We're going to change a little bit on the agenda. Item A needs probably to be tabled and taken into after D. So we're going to start with B in our second reading and consideration of ordinance 2025-1905, additional appropriations reduction. Mr. Merida?
Yes, good evening, Council. This is the thing I've committed to you for your first reading at the last meeting. It's an additional appropriation, again, for the fire and police. This is to offset the shortfall of the salaries, as we talked in the workshop in June. We've already fixed that in the budget for next year, but that, this rectifies the issue for this year. Again, as a reminder, the park bond, that had to do with us not getting the invoice from December until January of this year, so we just need to do an additional appropriation there. And then the reduction is just to free up those monies for next year, so we don't have to put those on the property tax roll for next year.
I would, again, entertain a motion and a second, and we can have additional discussion if we need.
Make the motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any questions for Mr. Merida for discussion between the council?
Yes, sir. You say it has been corrected for our next round, correct?
Yeah, correct.
And Ben, again, this is fire, police, and park bond?
Yes. And?
The reduction is unsafe, just because they didn't really need the money this year, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the second reading and consideration of ordinance 2025-1906, will tax and MBL, excise surtax. Mr. Merida? No, yes, this is Dale. I'm sorry.
Yes, this is second reading tonight. I know at the introductory meeting a couple of weeks ago, there'd been a question as to, is this new money, or is this just getting more of the pie that's already being collected? So everything, both myself and Mr. Merida find, the information we got from the state is, this is going to allow the city to take a share that's already been allocated to the county. So it's not necessarily a new tax, if you will, for new monies. So that's what this is. All in efforts to hopefully make up some of the money that the city of Martinsville is going to be losing, which will start feeling in '27, based upon Senate Bill 1.
Dale, thank you for that. I know that was the confusion last time about whether it was creating a new tax or it came from the state. And so will we be able to get more from the state due to I-69 coming through on this?
Not, 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 not for this particular tax, no. This'll be just for our local roads that we have within the city limits.
Thank you.
Again, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2025-1906.
I'll second.
A motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance. Any discussion between the council? If not, I'll call. All in favor of ordinance 2025-1906, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item is the second reading and consideration of ordinance 2025-1908, annexing certain territory to the city. Cheyenne, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Cheyenne Hoffer. I'm the entitlements manager for Four Star Group Indianapolis. Four Star Group is a residential land developer. We are coming here today to seek the annexation of the Sun Energy Farms property, which fronts onto 252, and it backs up to Faith Church that's on State Road 44. At the end of the packet for item used to be A is now after my item D. There's some additional information, and to give you guys an idea of what we're looking to do, if we are annexed, we will move into rezoning this property to a PUD. For, right now, our site plan shows 155 single-family homes. Right now, the lots are a little bit larger than the lots that were in Hannah Farms that we also developed. That's near Walmart. So half of the lots in Hannah Farm are 40-foot lots, and these are all going to be a little bit larger lots at 50 feet, which are, the Arbor is building the Arbor Series on. We're also in talks with Faith Church to potentially address any concerns about traffic and frontage onto 252. So we're hoping to buy some ground from Faith Church so that we can build a road that would have us enter and exit off of the State Road 44 to the north instead of down to 252. So that's in the works as well. The site plan that you see is still preliminary, and I hope to work with you all and town staff as we move through the rezone process, if we are annexed, to, you know, modify that in any ways, as we hear any feedback from you all. I do have the landowner here tonight. Mr. Fuel is the fool behind Sun Energy Farms. He has signed the agreement forms. He has an agreement that we would like this land to be annexed into the city of Martinsville.
You say the entrance exit will only be on 44 now?
So as it's shown right now in the plan, it does show us exiting onto 252. That's this piece right now that we're asking to annex is all that we have under contract. We are in talks with Faith Church to hopefully build an entrance, instead of our primary entrance being on 252, we'd hope to have a primary entrance on 44. We would either, we'd work with adjacent landowners, or just have an emergency exit onto 252, where emergency vehicles would only be allowed to enter and exit as a second form of emergency access for the site. So that's still in the works. At this point, we're just looking if you guys would annex the property into the city of Martinsville. But there are still a few variables out there on the site plan.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
One of the variable, variables, as you mentioned, was the access in and out, because if, right now, the only access is 252, have you guys driven that to, to know how unsafe it is?
Yes, we have driven that, and we also have had a, I've been in talks with NDOT, and we've actually already conducted a traffic study. So we understand if we were to build on 252, what the, what NDOT would want those improvements to look like. However, you guys may feel differently in terms of, you know, you might not like that entrance at all. So we've been working with Gary, basically, since we signed this up, that we, we knew this was not going to be the access that you all would want to see. So Faith Church has been agreeable to work with us to get that second, or the form, our primary form of access. Faith Church is already annexed. All of their property has been annexed into the city. So at this point, we're not seeking any additional annexation of their property or anything, so.
What was the recommendation by NDOT?
The NDOT was to have a three-way controlled stop there, and we'd be adding a turn lane. It's really tight in there. I understand it's hilly. I see the, I mean, you know, when you drive by, my first couple of times, I'm like, am I even gonna be able to get in and out right here? So I definitely understand the concerns of, of you all, as well as staff that has, you know, urged us to find an alternative solution for our primary entrance.
Does Little housing addition, I don't know if it's really an addition, it's a little back road, back on the backside off of Old Morgantown?
Yep.
Is that?
So we have also been in talks with that landowner to potentially do a, an emergency egress on that side as well. No, they don't own that. It's a different landowner, but he actually attended the last meeting. We talked on the phone a few times before that. So we're in talks with him as well. So we have a couple different options that we're looking at in terms of, of egress, that, one of them being that as well. Not as our primary entrance.
And again, these are all, will all be addressed by the Plan Commission when they make, Four Star makes the recommendation, and then they'll send it back to you for approval. And again, these are all great questions. Everybody has a great concern of 252. So I think when we start having discussion, if this gets approved for the Plan Commission, that you all try to come to a meeting and have some input on that, too. That would be great. So I'm looking for a motion on ordinance 2025-1908.
I make a motion that we approve 2025-1908, annexing certain territory to the city, Sun Energy Farms.
I'll second.
An motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance. Any further discussion between the council?
I just think at this time, there's too many variables, and I'm not going to vote for it at this time.
I've had multiple conversations with Faith Church's personnel, because we've made it abundantly clear to Four Star, we prefer State Road 44 as the entrance. It's so much safer. It's open, third side both ways, and I have every confidence Faith's going to work out a deal for that.
Can I ask a question? Who have you talked to at NDOT?
I would have to check my email. So basically, I reached out to get, for a traffic study, we have to have, they give kind of scope of warrant. So I'd have to look at my email, but I can get back to you on that. But we've had some conversations, and they preliminarily said, this is what we think you're going to need, then you get a traffic study, you know. Before I got the traffic study, just because, you know, as we, you know, go under contract on this land, we see it, you know, immediately, our mind starts thinking, secondary entrance, you know, things like that. So, and again, this is just the annexation, so I'm hopeful that a lot of, maybe I'll even have hopefully answers to this by the time I come to a possible rezone, especially because we're working with Faith Church to possibly, if we do extend up to 44, maybe there would be a few houses on one side of that roadway, you know, we'd be extending utilities to serve the church as well, so.
I talked to NDOT today, and the engineers have nothing. They've talked to no one. The head ladies talked to no one. And I think there's some real concerns, not only of all the neighbors that live around there, and people that have traveled 252, but there's some real concerns from NDOT. So even the idea of putting anything entering or exiting off 252, I can pretty well tell you ain't going to fly.
And again, this is for the annexation, but you also understand, the landowner understands that if you get to the Plan Commission, these are all, have to be things, and if there's nothing, if there's something that's shown on 252, the Plan Commission probably will not accept. So everybody knows.
Definitely understood, yep.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd also like to thank Cheyenne for calling me back and giving me information. She called a couple of times during the last two weeks, and I appreciate the information, Cheyenne. From Four Star, that was nice.
Just to make sure the council understands, super voluntary annexation, meaning that the 100% of the land is owned by one person who is in favor of the annexation. All you're doing tonight is being asked to expand the boundaries of the city of Martinsville and bring 68.95 acres into the city of Martinsville, which would then be city taxed. That's all you're asking to do tonight. All these other questions will be dealt with in a different arena for a different day.
And then that, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Coffey, and then that comes back to us, and at that point, right?
That's correct.
And again, normally, we show on our annexation, we normally annex if we can show that it will benefit the city.
Yeah. And if, after this particular request, if it's approved, the next item on your agenda tonight is the fiscal plan, which talks about how the city's going to extend services to the area. Many have already been extended, well, the major ones have been extended out there already with those water and sewer.
Yes. And then we also have funds from the county to extend on across Faith Church to this property, right at one and a half million dollars.
One and a half million, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Then let's call for a vote. All in favor of ordinance 2025-1908, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Motion passes. Let's go back to A on our agenda, the Resolution 2025-0719, the written plan. Cheyenne?
Hello, Ken. I have in front of you guys our written fiscal plan for the annexation of real estate. Bailey, Tuohy, and Moore, my outside counsel, has prepared this document along with some assistance from your attorney and Mr. Porter. We've worked with them to, as the last meeting, to do all of the legal notices and et cetera for our public hearing that was last town council meeting. As Mr. Mayor indicated, the water and sewer are going to be extended near to the site by an American Rescue Plan Act funding that the county had given to the city of Martinsville. So in terms of services, water, sewer, that is going to be already extended probably before even a home would be built if we are approved out there. All of the onsite utilities will be built and paid for by the developer, and there's some additional information indicating that additional services are not anticipated to be warranted at this time in terms of additional police and fire staff. The city of Martinsville would serve the site with trash, snow removal, et cetera, in the future of this development. I think it's three years that they have to serve some of those requirements, and then water and sewer are required to be provided within a year.
So we have for you tonight, Resolution 2025-0719. Is there any motion on this?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-0719, written fiscal plan for annexation of real estate.
I'll second.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion between the council?
We're talking the same properties, right?
Question? There's no question or discussion, then the council will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the second reading and consideration ordinance 2025-1909, additional appropriations. Mr. Merida?
Yes, again, before you tonight, it's the second reading of the Park Bond 2018, additional appropriation. Again, just a reminder, this is to allow my office to pay off this bond a year early. This will free up about $7,000 for the city, so nothing earth-shattering, but it does get another bond off our books early, so.
So, Mr. Merida, we have the, the funds to pay this off, I, I take, and this is going to help us financially?
Yes, you're, actually, the park fund is sitting on right at $350,000, so they have the cash to, to pay this bond off early. And as the property tax money comes in, it will go back to theirs. So it's, it's really net zero to them, but it does save the city a few thousand dollars by doing this early.
It saves us $2,000, okay. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-1909.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance. Any discussion between the council? For further questions for Mr. Merida? If not, I'd call for a vote. All in favor of ordinance 2025-1909, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the second reading and consideration of ordinance 2025-1910, request for rezoning. Mr. Coffey?
Believe it or not, we have representatives from the applicant Rooted Oaks Construction LLC.
Good evening, Council, sorry. Attorney Stephen Brown here, representing Rooted Oaks in their petition to rezone a property located at 1209 South Main Street, the intersection of Main and South Street. Currently, the property has a, it's a six-parceled property, and it has fixed zoning of residentially in business, looking to rezone this to R3 for all six parcels. This was already put forth before the Planning Commission, voted 62 in favor of the rezoning. As we, as we look over at the picture we presented, the middle parcel, the middle picture represents what the property is right now. It's an old grocery store that's been abandoned for about seven years. Just north of that are two other parcels on the other side of South Street. That is a residential, another parcel to get utilized for storage. The far picture on the far right is the proposed townhomes that Rooted Oaks plans to put in. They are three-story townhomes, and then they would have a parking on the back. What I'd like to do, take a little bit of time, looking at the comprehensive plan of Martinsville, and kind of go through why this rezoning is appropriate for the, for the city. According to the comprehensive plan, 86% of all residents in the city of Martinsville would like to have a property revitalized opposed to reusing their, using new green space. So that's exactly what my client's looking to do, is revitalize the current parcel that is there, demo the building. my clients looking to do, is revitalize the, uh, current parcel that is there, demo the building and then revitalize that for residential, that's exactly what the comprehensive plan would call for, um, another aspect of the comprehensive plan is housing. Um, right now, there's a limited shortage of housing in Martinsville, uh, especially to attract younger, more professional individuals. So those are individuals in the, who work in Indianapolis or Bloomington, uh, this, uh, development would help, uh, bring those people, those young professionals to the city of Martinsville and then, um, bring those, uh, those income, uh, to the neighborhood and, uh, help the revitalization of the area. The other aspect that would help with this revitalization, if we look at the middle parcel, you can see along Main Street, there's no curbs or sidewalks, so it's a very dangerous intersection right now. So anybody walking would walk in the, uh, the parking lot and/or the streets, so that this development would, in addition to building the townhomes, would add sidewalks and curbs along Main Street and then also South Street, so that enhance the walkability in the neighborhood and the safety of the whole, uh, neighborhood also for pedestrian traffic. There's also, the other thing too that has been brought up is possible drainage. Currently, the site is a lot hardscape, about a hundred percent hardscape between the roofs and the parking lot. The development would be, would have a lot of green space, um, so drainage would, uh, be enhanced by the green space, not just the hard, hardscapes. And, uh, based on that, based on the comprehensive plan, uh, we, we would ask that the proposed ordinance be approved for the rezoning of these six parcels.
I have a question, so this is, these are gonna be town, townhomes that are like rentals, right, like rental apartments?
They will be professionally managed, so there'll be a management company, they'll be engaged to manage the properties.
So, so they won't be, no one would be owning these, these would be rentals, people will rent?
Correct, they would be rental townhomes.
You said you were gonna be targeting young professionals to come to Martinsville to live there to revitalize. What young professionals, what groups are you targeting and how are you gonna target them, what kind of campaign are you gonna use to get them here?
Well, I think if we look at just, uh, the picture itself, the, the residence kind of, uh, it's a new, modern, uh, townhome here. According to the, uh, comprehensive plan and revitalization plans, there has not been any significant development, especially residential within Martinsville the last twenty years, so by having new, uh, development, especially something that would appeal to the younger individual, that's in these townhomes, uh, that's what, uh, I think in itself would bring, uh, young professionals to the area. In addition to adding the sidewalks, if we add sidewalks, it makes it more walkable and then, uh, we're not, the property's not too far from downtown Martinsville, so again, more walkability, uh, the younger generation's looking for more connective to the downtown and more walking of the neighborhood, so that's what this would, would allow.
And what would be the, the density of, of the amount of people in these, at that corner?
There's twenty-three units that are gonna be put in on both sides, so that would be the, uh, the four parcels on the south side of South Street, on Main, and, uh, on the two parcels north, on the north side of the South Street.
So twenty-three units?
Total, twenty-three units total, correct.
What kind of preventative steps have you taken regarding safety, traffic, that kind of thing in the, for this situation?
Uh, currently, I don't believe I can have a representative Rooted Oaks, but I don't think there's been a traffic study, uh, currently right now.
That's a major concern of this project. Has your owner been here since we've been having these discussions, back to Martinsville, to Martinsville to view it?
We, we, the owner, there's two owners, uh, one lives in Georgia, another representative, yeah, uh, Mike Gossett is, is a resident of Martinsville, has a community stake in Martinsville, um, so he's very interested in this development, uh, so he's the eyes and the, and the feet on ground, uh, for Rooted Oaks in the community.
Again, how did you say you were gonna deal with the, uh, flooding and the water runoff there?
Yeah, so the, the current setup or the current, uh, infrastructure there, it's all hardscape, there's a parking lot and there's building rooftops that don't allow for real, a lot of drainage, the new proposed development will have greenscape and it'll have, so it'll allow for drainage to the ground. Uh, so it'll be less hardscape, more drainage, and then as needed, um, the project will connect to the existing, there's existing storm drains in that area that the city, that they'll connect to, and if needed, uh, they, there could be, um, a need to, or a plan to add more slope and then connect to the city drainage, there will be drainage on the property itself. So that's how that would be addressed, and there may be a, another conversation with city engineering if needed, uh, to address any drainage issues.
I could see this in downtown Indianapolis, I could see this in Bloomington, that, the neighborhood, the way it is, it was single-family homes, I, I just don't think this would fit in. And, and like, uh, Mrs. Lip said, the, you know, with the, the middle school being right there and all the bus traffic.
Yeah, I would say to your concern, I mean, adding the, right now, as we see, there's no sidewalks, right, so the walkability of that area is, is limited, if at all.
Along Main Street.
Some brand-new sidewalks on some house.
Okay, all right, we're, 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 we're getting off base here, you were presenting the ordinance again, you've given information, I think we're at this point, we need to either have a motion, uh, on this ordinance to have further discussion between the council.
I make a motion with that we do not approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen ten.
I second.
A motion made and seconded not to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five nineteen ten. Any other comments or discussion with the council?
I just don't think the best interest of Martinsville, the city of Martinsville, or the citizens of Martinsville are being considered. And we are, we have to listen to our constituents, to the people that vote for us and that we represent, and listening to them the past month, the, the people have spoken and said that this is not safe and they have lots of concerns, lots of worries that have not gone answered or responded to in a way that I feel comfortable with, so I'm gonna be voting no.
Just so you know, the motion is to not approve.
Right. No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I agree with the motion, voting not to move it forward.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes, I asked the last time, this is the very first time I heard about this, uh, it was told it was going to be condominiums, very similar to those on East Harrison Street, the old Van Oofleer property, and that's what I was led to believe. And then at our last meeting is the first I heard of it being apartments, and I, I asked about that because, uh, well, I was trying to figure out why the, that's, again, that area is not my council district area, but I'm on a raise in that area, so they still consider me as their neighbor, and so they all contacted me and I, wait a minute, I just was showed some plans of some nice condominiums up there, starting around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so I, I couldn't understand what the the motion was, and found out at our last meeting, it, yeah, it's changed different than what I was originally told. And, uh, so I know when we entered the meeting last time, I asked if the developer was opposed to staying with condominiums and selling condominiums, so we had homes be sold for families to buy in. I'm guessing that's not an option any longer, or is not an option?
Not for what we have.
I guess not from what we have, e- even if, you know, to that point, and to, uh, Council Miller's point that, that the, whatever we put through, even the condominiums, they're gonna have a new look, right? And they won't, a new look won't, the, the area is a, it's an older neighborhood, right, and newer development just won't, it won't look the same as the old development, it's just how it is unfortunately, so any development, whether it be townhomes or condominiums, would have a new look in that area, and again, I think that's what is revitalizing, then, uh, Martinsville will bring in new, uh, developments. So it is gonna change the look in the, in the field of the neighborhood, but that is for the longevity of the city.
Well, at, at this point, there is a motion and a second on the floor not to approve this. If there's another discussion between the council, then we'll call for a vote, all in favor of not approving this, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is not to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one nine one zero. Next on the agenda is consideration of claims, you were sent copies of the claims prior to tonight's meeting, any comments or questions?
I make a motion we approve the claims.
Second.
It's been a motion made and seconded to approve the claims as presented, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Any comments from the council today?
Yes, I was wondering if we could reconsider the budget workshop proposed date of June twenty-seventh. I know we did that same week last year, and I was unable to attend for thirty-nine straight years, that's when the week my family goes on vacation. And I, I mean, if, if we choose to have it on June twenty-seventh, just want you to know I won't be able to attend.
One would be a good alternative.
Any other Saturday for me, but I know in the past, we had broken them up and done different, like, two hours before meetings or other things, and I know that's inconvenient. I'm agreeable and flexible to do whatever, I just know, I for sure right now cannot come June twenty-seventh, just wanna let you all know that.
Matt, what were you saying?
You could go to the twentieth, I think if we go later than that, it messes up, we have given
Yeah, we, yeah, we do it earlier or a little bit later, but.
With, with the twentieth, we're, with everybody at this point? Let's, let's shoot for the twentieth then.
Thank you.
And make sure you get that out to the media.
Okay.
Anything else from the council?
Mayor, if, and I did not compare the dates, I know they're changing over, were there any other? There's a couple I had concerns, if there's a concern on any other date, we can address that later.
Okay. Very similar to, it's like we're taking the twenty-second, which is the week of Christmas, and going to the twenty-ninth, so.
I appreciate, I know we ran, it seems like we ran into the school schedule and families that take off on those times, the schools are out, and I know it's not everybody, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure, so that way we can try to accommodate, I appreciate that.
Any comment from the public this evening?
If you're a brand person, keep our K nine officer, Andrew Perez, I think everything's gonna be fine, just by the several comments, but that's one of ours to. Yeah, K nine officer.
I just wanted to comment, um, the, uh, Bobby Hells Jingle Bell Christmas Celebration that was yesterday, where I was only there for a short time, but it was so cute, so wonderful. I just, you know, seeing those little kids run around and, um, just giggling and having fun, it was, it was a beautiful, beautiful celebration.
Yeah, I know, it was kind of cool out, but I would say easily there were a thousand people through over three to seven thirty.
Yes, it was very, very, very.
It amazes me how many older people were trying to ice skate, folks, our bones break easier when we get older, don't be doing that.
I missed the Christmas, I missed the, uh, Christmas parade, I know that didn't happen this year, and that, I, I had people contact me about that, but, you know, it's.
And we are working on possibly doing that next year, so, no promises. Anything from the public? Anything from the public?
Can I make just a random comment?
Uh, if you come up front and say your name, an address.
I'll try to. Blackballed and I will be allowed to come back. This is a random comment, I went to the planning commission meeting, as my understanding, I'm sorry, Mary Ryan, that the planning commission doesn't have a plan, and maybe they do, but that they turned down a multi-development with a daycare center and a whatever in what I call Hannaville, is that Hannah Acres? Which seems to me to be the place to put new develop, that's just my random comment from sitting through the planning commission meeting, thank you, and my black ball.
No, there's, uh, there's a twenty twenty-two planning commission, this is, they have comprehensive plan that addresses all these, so I can give you that, talk you that.
But you do see what I'm saying, that that's where new construction is, and maybe that's where, I mean, there was nothing wrong with what you had, but it doesn't fit in a seventy-year-old neighborhood, thank you, and my black ball.
Jim Burkhart, ninety Edgewood Street, this may, I don't know, it may be more for Mr. Coffey, but the ordinance on the wheel tax, it's, uh, it looks like part of it is for commercial and then part of it is for passenger vehicles or whatever. It says recreational vehicles, it's, my question is about the golf carts and the four-by-fours or two-by-five, whatever those things are in this town, is there anything on in that for those particular vehicles?
Not, 'cause it has to be playing vehicles.
So we, yeah, I think it says in the commercial vehicles, it's registered, but in the passenger vehicle, it's licensed, is that correct? Something like that?
I'd have to go back and look at the exact.
It's just seems to me if we, if we start taxing our vehicles, then we might end up with more golf carts and side to side.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else from the public? If not, uh, just a couple announcements, uh, Christmas is Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and Friday, the twenty-sixth, all non-emergency city offices will be closed those two days, so for those residents who normally have their trash picked up on Thursday, it's gonna be Wednesday, and those that have it on Friday will be Monday. Other than that?
Do you want to repeat that, council date again, that it, on the next one?
The next meeting will be Monday, the twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.